Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could remain standing for a quick moment, please. We'd like to have a moment of silence for Laura Solomon, past employee of the district and community member. In remembrance, a moment of silence, please. Thank everybody so much. Everybody can please silence your electronic devices unless needed. It looks like we have a few students here. My name is Timothy Cremley. I'm the board president. I run the meeting. That's one line on your piece of paper. And at the end of the meeting, anybody, any board member up here can sign your piece of paper for your class. So feel free to come up to any board member at the end of the meeting to get that signed off for your class. Thank you so much. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Where's Todd?
Right here.
So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Unfortunately, yes, Mr. President. I know many of you are here tonight to hear about our enrollment update. However, we did that at the last Board of Education meeting, so I'm removing item 02 from the agenda for tonight, which is part of my report. Yeah.
Motion to remove 02 made by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Motion to adjop the agenda as amended, made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. So we're about to have a public hearing on policy 5300, Code of Conduct. So a motion to recess for the public hearing made by Mrs. Galligan, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Cremley. So tonight, we are holding a public hearing to amend our code of conduct. It is a relatively small amendment. It is under the Student Dress Code for elementary students. The board has a copy of that, and this was discussed at a previous policy committee meeting. The change would be to remove the language that says the following specific items are also not permitted. Hats and head coverings for elementary students pre-K5 are not permitted unless authorized by the principal. The Code of Conduct Committee met around this issue, and they are recommending that it be removed, code of conduct, which would therefore allow hats and head coverings to be worn by elementary students. The Code of Conduct Committee did find, you know, flexibility and latitude for staff members to be able to kind of redirect, rebook us elementary students if they were, you know, had their brims pulled down over their faces or had a hood wrapped around their faces, if you will. So we believe that this is important to some particular students who believe that these are part of who they are and part of their fashion, and it is worth noting that hats and head coverings are permitted at the high school level, at the middle school and high school level. So it did come through our Code of Conduct Committee, which does have different stakeholders represented. The policy committee discussed it at its last meeting, and we have to hold a public hearing in order to make any changes to our code of conduct. So later on the agenda, I have a recommendation that the board conduct a first reading of that, depending on how the public hearing goes tonight. So any questions from the public or the board?
We're good? Fantastic. Motion to reconvene the meeting made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. I failed to mention earlier, we do have a board member on Zoom. Today, Vicki had some personal commitments that she needed to attend to, so she's attending via Zoom. That's why we have the screen at the other end of the table. So we do almost have a full board. Adriana wasn't able to make it tonight, but that's why the setup is that way this evening. Motion to approve the minutes, February 2nd, 2023, made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mr. Feltman, student board member update?
On February 10th, five students in the high school were awarded the New York State Scholarship for Academic Excellence. Also on the 10th, the seniors finally got to have their celebrations for winning the Western Spirit Week. After being rescheduled, Jazz Fest did take place on February 11th. We have the assistant principal interview for the position in the high school on Monday, the 13th. On Tuesday, the 14th, the Red Cross hosted the Blood Drive. Yesterday, we had our honor roll ceremony for the second quarter in the high school. Today, we had our student advisory meeting with Mr. Wilder, where one of the biggest things we accomplished was getting students back on the morning announcements. On March 3rd, 4th, and 5th will be the SCA All County Music Festival, and we have students, a student working on a project to change the name of Great Gavine to Tampa Place.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feltman. Appreciate it. Which brings us to everybody's on the edge of their seat, the budget presentation for the evening. Ms. Vail?
So this evening, we have our first budget presentation from our department heads. We have plant operations, transportation, security, and technology. Can you move that? Go to the next slide. So as an introduction, the board appreciates public input. The Board of Education does adopt the final budget. The adopted budget is presented to the public at a budget hearing in May, and the public votes on that adopted budget. Additional details of the budget will be presented at subsequent meetings. Our goal always is to be as transparent as possible, and we will open the floor at the end of the presentation for questions from the Board of Education. And if we don't have answers, we will provide them at the subsequent budget meetings. Next slide, our key focus points always are our vision, our mission, and our goals set by the Board of Education. The first presentation is Mr. Steve Lewis, our Director of Facilities. Will present the request for the Plant Operations Department. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, everyone. I'm assuming that the board has already looked this over, my press, the tabulation sheet is up there. So anyway, the contractual and other, as you can see, is raised. Just price increase, we've had a substantial increase in inspections, the fire alarm, you know, calls or repairs, it's just, everything is just going up. The fuel oil, we did, I did not have enough in the budget last year to pay for all the fuel oil. We anticipated, I think that the bid came out after we did the budget last year. So the numbers were paying a good amount of money for oil. Fortunately, we did not lock in. We stayed with the current price, so we saved by doing that, but at any rate. So next year, the bid is 344 a gallon. We're anticipating 200,000 gallons, so that's $688,000. So that's why that has increased to 700,000. Everything else is pretty much self-explanatory, just the prices have went up as far as the cost of things. That's just how it is. Equipment, custodial equipment, I last year had 40,000, I have 100,000 this year. I'm looking at an autonomous floor scrubber. Autonomous floor scrubber is a robot scrubber. They're telling me return on investment is about eight months. It'll scrub, we can program it, so it scrubs all the floors, the hallways in the middle school and high school every night. It just needs someone to kind of guide it, you know, to, for example, we'll go up on the third floor, we'll dust mop it, we'll get it going on the third floor, the gentleman will come down on the second floor, whoever, dust mop, move it to the second floor, it'll scrub, and just keep going ahead of it. That way, we can scrub the floors every night, and it'll free up. You know, they do the hallways now as it is, but not every night. So I'm looking at something like that to try to, just to, I think it'll do a better job for us. So I took the money on an equipment replacement. I don't intend to buy a truck this year. I did leave 40,000 in there. We got one zero turn, possibly two that I'd like to replace this year. Two that we have, they're getting in a lot of hours, a lot of age on them. Special purchase, we all know we have leaks in the middle school in the courtyard. I've got a quote on sealing the windows. We have no way to get in there. So a company would come in and seal the brick, seal the windows, cough the windows, and other projects that we'd like to do. Custodial supplies went up. Everything has, prices are going up, garbage bags, paper towels, everything is going up close. Supplies maintenance, we walk the building. We'd like to possibly replace ceiling tiles in the elementary schools in the hallways, enhance the look of them. Tiles and lights, drop in lights to make them better. The grounds, we dropped the price on there because we did the ball fields, we did the fence, we did the dugouts. So we're in pretty good shape there. And just district bills, I raised that a little bit because the prices are going up, and that's kind of it. Is everything going up? Yes, sir.
On the autonomous floor scrubber, does that get a lesser footprint than a larger walk-by scrubber?
It'll do the same footprint.
No, no, no. The machine?
Machine, say that again, no?
Is the machine smaller?
It's a 26-inch scrubber, or walk-bines are 26-inch.
Well, I know that storage space is at a premium for all of our equipment.
Yeah, no, we'll be okay.
All right. And, sorry, there was something else. Go ahead, Noah.
Is there any budget line for, I know as we started to walk through, we saw an elementary school line need to be replaced, in spite of painting, things of that nature that are moving in here?
That's part of the supplies maintenance, yes. Ceiling tiles, lines, just painting, they enhance the looks of these schools, yes.
I know we talked about it, I think, last meeting. You're going to two-by-twos.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for Stephen? Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Next slide. Next up, we have Robin Sklarz, our Director of Transportation, to present the Transportation Department budget.
Hi, everybody. How are you tonight? Sorry if I'm a little slow. It's past my bedtime. So this year, basically exactly what Steve said, it's inflation. Bus prices have gone up quite a lot. So we did increase the buses to 60, 600,000. The purchase service agreements, they're all the same. They're staying the same. Dry cleaning, contracting, they're same, physicals. Mostly, nothing has changed except for inflation. We had to up the fuel. That prices of fuel have gone up. We're pretty good this year with it. I mean, so far, the year's not over with, so, but watching it, we seem to be, we're going to be just fine to the end of the year. So, but we did increase it in case, and hopefully it can't get worse than it was. Bus parts, major price increase. I mean, any computer part, we're waiting for it. Any stock items that used to be stock, they're not out there. So you pay a price to ship it faster, to get it faster. So we did up the price of bus parts. The garage itself, that stays the same. We haven't, we didn't change the budget on that at all for the 5520 code. Well, that's the same. And it's about a $99,000 increase for this year.
Were you going to encourage any? You put in that we want an electric bus?
Correct. We did win an electric bus.
But there's also background noise to that, a charging station, things of that nature.
That's included.
Install for all that?
Yes.
Is all, all the installs included also?
Yeah, I don't know how, if it's going to cost us for like an engineer to look at it and stuff. We're finalizing that right now, but all of that should be part of it. It's $500,000. The bus is about 300,000. It gives you about $200,000 to get a charging station, and that's what they're doing now. They're doing assessment letters to see what charging system, there's like grade two, grade three, and up, so they're checking on that right now.
So it's in the works? In the works?
It's in the works. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions for Robin? Thank you very much, Mrs. Sklarz.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Gordon, our Director of Technology for the Technology Department budget.
Good evening, everyone. This year's technology budget will continue to focus on the replacement cycle of mobile devices, replacement of smart boards with interactive TVs, along with maintaining a strong infrastructure, and we continue to take efforts to ensure our cybersecurity is strong. Our technicians have been doing a fantastic job of fixing damaged laptops in-house, which has greatly mitigated the cost of replacement devices. We've completed the replacement of smart boards to interactive TVs in our high school, and we have recently purchased all of the interactive TVs to replace all of the smart boards in the middle school. So that project should be completed by the end of the summer. Our infrastructure remains strong as we recently replaced our core data center, access points, and UPSs, uninterrupted power sources throughout the district. For cybersecurity, we've recently finished rolling out a managed stock. It's a security operations center. We're in the process of completing our incident response and disaster recovery plan. We continue to work with Sullivan County BOCs and county tech directors on a compliance risk management tool, which helps to ensure compliance in this cybersecurity standard. The Technology Department is committed to continuing to work towards our district vision of building a world-class community of schools and be a district of choice, and we are very excited about the progress that we've made. We've been able to meet the challenges of inflation by using the expertise within our team on items such as the need to purchase fewer managed service hours and repairing those devices in-house. So the Technology Department is not requesting any increase at this time.
Any questions for our Technology Director? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our next presentation, Mr. Doug Murphy, who is our AP and Director of Security, will present the security.
Hey, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everyone? Kim really got off. Again, I have some purchasing supplies, general supplies. I was going to do a simple rollover, unlike my other colleagues, where inflation is hitting them. They have those costs driven up. We do have an addition. There was an ask about metal detectors and some wands. So that is the additional amount. I'm sure if it goes out the bid, we'll get a little lower cost, but we're looking for two portable metal detectors. Each come with a wand, and we're buying four additional wands. Last December, I went down to Middletown to view how they do things. We're going to have to modify our system. We do not have as big a security team as they do.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? I'm sorry, it's just questions from the board. Thank you, though.
If I may, just to, relative to the metal detectors, what we'd be looking at are two metal detectors. That would be, again, they're portable, and we, you can tell by our entrances and exits, they're not really conducive to do, you know, wide-scale metal detection of students. But the idea would be that we would kind of move these around to different entrances from time to time, and then we would randomize metal detection of students. That is consistent with state regs and what metal detection can happen, and we do that out of the, you know, the security and safety of everyone in the school. So right now, the first step in that process is to kind of earmark money in the budget for it. We would have more discussions and have a more robust policy and procedure around what that process would look like. But it would not be as, you know, it wouldn't be like going to an airport or a courthouse. It would be from time to time, they would be made available, and we would randomize selection for metal detection. We could also use them at public events, so, you know, any like indoor event, we could use them there as well. So that's.
So, Mr. Murphy?
Do you think $10,000 is going to cover that?
Yes, for two. If you would like more, then a little more. It's about a $5,000 investment for each.
And it's not the device itself that takes up the resources, it's the humans who have to work it and do it. So, you know, right now, we have a security staff at capacity in the morning. We are looking at the potential of additional armed security that would kind of complement our current security attendants and our SROs. That is not reflected here because we've just begun exploring that as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, the next few slides are just informational for the board and the public. This slide shows our K-12 enrollment for the last eight years. Every year, we have declining enrollment, as you can see from this slide. The next slide shows our budget-to-budget increase and our tax levy increases over the last several years. And this year, obviously, we had a 0% increase in our tax levy. And next slide is the budget calendar. April 17th of 2023 is the deadline for submission of voter-initiated propositions to be placed on the ballot. Deadline for submission of petitions for board candidates is also April 17th. April 21st is the final legal date for the board to adopt the budget. April 27th, the three-part budget document is made available at various locations and upon a request. May 4th will be our budget hearing, where the public will be able to ask specific questions, and May 16th is the annual meeting and the budget vote. Upcoming budget presentations. Tonight, we had our directors. Our next meeting, we will have our building principals and our athletic department. March 16th, there's going to be a lot on March 16th, just because of the way winter or the spring break falls, where we have to adopt the budget earlier than we normally would. So March 16th, we have quite a few departments that'll be presenting curriculum instruction, PPS, special programs, BOCs. We'll discuss staffing and benefits and district-wide expenditures with an anticipation of the board adopting the budget on April 11th. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mrs. Vail?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So everyone's good with the budget presentation? Very well. Mrs. Jersey?
I move to accept the consent agenda as a group, F1 through M2.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much. Information reports and discussions for roundtable. Ashley?
Okay. I went to the basketball game last night, and here at school, it was really energized, I could say. And I sat next to a few parents, and I was basically the cheerleading parents, and, and it was a great time. I was happy I went. I went to a football game this year, and my kids are younger, so I'm just getting into the high school games and such. But, but it was a great time. So I'm at Baywind, and that's all I've got to report. Thank you.
So I've been attending the Monticello High School Alpine ski team and all their races up until the Section 9 Division Champs, which were held yesterday. We have some phenomenal skiers, and they did very well in both the division and in the division championships. There's four actual, two girls and two boys that are heading to states next week. And considering they haven't had a ski hill to ski on or snow to be on or practice or training, they have done very well and should be commended. In addition, I just have to say, I've been doing this probably, this is my second child, probably six years. And yesterday, our Athletic Director of Athletics, Ryan Jasper, actually came all the way to Hunter Mountain to actually watch the girls and the boys compete and race. I just wanted to thank him. I thought that was very nice, and I just really appreciate the fact that they drove all that way just to see the students race.
Thanks very much, Wendy. Mr. Groden?
I'd like to say that going through the high school, after we had toured it before, I'd love to see that all the improvements that we had asked for were installed in security, and it's just reassuring after we're getting to the close of this capital project that I am encouraged and I'm looking forward to the next one. And I have to reiterate what Trusty Gallagher said, where it is that having a Director of Athletics that's involved is highly encouraging, and he's a heck of a guy, and I'd like to see where it keeps going, so kudos, Coach.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groden. Mrs. LaRusso?
Hi. I'm away, so I haven't been anything, but I would like to congratulate our athletes. They have done amazing. And also, I've just had not seen a Project Red in this, but I believe Ms. Alfred put that together, and Mr. Jasper, who said it was absolutely phenomenal, and the heartwarming and the school spirit you see that.
Thank you very much, Vicki. Mrs. Rivera?
I have not been able to attend any school events, however, I would like to take the time to congratulate these year's recipients for the New York State Scholarship of Excellence. We do have two of those members, I believe, here this evening, so congratulations. Three. I don't know if you guys want to stand up real quick to give you a round of applause. Congratulations, and, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rivera. Mrs. Holmes, Mr. Groden? Mrs. Jersey?
Been to boys' basketball. I was at the game last night, the game on Friday night, and the crowd's been incredible. It's, school spirit's just shining all over. Congratulations to the boys, because now they're into sectionals. Congratulations on the girls' win tonight, because I just got the text that they won also.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jersey. The other day, I attended a safety committee meeting. The safety committee was concentrating on going over the school-level safety plan, making recommendations and critiques on that as directed to us by the state that we have to go over that plan on a regular basis, so we were working on that. The audit committee did meet this evening before this meeting, went off without a hitch. There was a couple insights that they had into recommendations they had for things that we can do just to tighten up things a little bit, and our business official was all over it. I did attend the boys' basketball game the other night when they beat Beacon in the fourth quarter, which was fantastic. Congratulations to all the senior athletes who have been, senior nights have been this week for the most part. And congratulations to all those seniors on their winter season. The other night, I ran into somebody at a restaurant, and their nephew was having issues in school. He is now attending the alternative school, and he exclaimed to me about how much of a change he's seen in his nephew and how pronounced his achievements have been since he moved there. Different strokes for different folks, I guess. Certain people need certain things, and that's what he needed to succeed. So thank you so much to Monticello for having that available to our students, and to Mrs. Gore and the personnel over there at St. John Street for putting that together for our students. You definitely have one content customer. The other thing I did the other night is I dropped my son off to a soccer clinic at the Rutherford School, being run by Darren Rayner, who also pitched in and coached our modified boys' team this year. He's a fantastic guy, and I just wanted to say out loud, thank you very much to Mr. Rayner for all that he does for our students, and, you know, he's in it, and he's there, and it's not just words. He, you know, he puts in where he sees that he needs it, and he does a fantastic job with it. So thank you very much, Mr. Rayner.
Mr. Crumley, do you mind if I add something else? I forgot.
Surely.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just, I meant to mention this. Number one, at the basketball game, I just noticed that there was a very strong security presence there. It was, it was very visible. And not only that, but you just see just the friendly nature, and we're very blessed to have the security that we have. So, thank you, and thank you to the head of security. So, there's that. The other thing was, I was noticing, I thought the cheerleaders' outfits were very classy. They're just this, they're classy-looking, in my opinion, and they're blue bows. And I had mentioned that, and a parent said that they, they actually didn't have the funding this year for new uniforms. So, I just thought I would put it out there as far as that's something to be looked into, like how to remedy that.
If I may do that.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Jasper has built in, and he'll present that at the next budget presentation. He has built in new uniforms for several sports.
Wonderful. I mean, I thought they looked great, so, but it was just something that was mentioned, so I thought I would mention that. And then, just one other, I don't know, one other thing to say is, during the halftime performance, I thought that the cheerleaders, they looked like they were at their own, like, dance club, which is great for them. They were having fun. At the, at the same time, I was thinking, maybe a little bit of like, I don't know, maybe note your audience a little bit. I don't, I don't mean to throw it out there, but...
Same, the audience was old?
And young. My daughter was there, and she's sixth grade. But I just thought I'd throw it out there. I thought that they were having fun and, you know, but I just thought I would mention it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Moving on from Board Roundtable, we have reports from our directors. Any questions or comments about the director reports today? Thank you very much to all the directors for giving us that information. Correspondence outcomes, none at this time. Policy committee memo. Our next meeting is the 6th...
Second.
Second of March.
Yep. And we do have, tonight, the board will be doing second readings and adoptions of four revised, one new, well, four revised policies on video conferencing board meetings, contracting for professional services, student personal expression and the use of timeout rooms, physical restraints and adverses. Those are all consistent with New York State School Boards Association recommendations or recommendations from our legal counsel as it relates to contracting. And then, the board will be doing two first readings. And I would, depending on the board's, you know, discretion, I would recommend that the board consider a first reading and adoption of the change to the code of conduct. But if the board wanted more time to mull that over, that's perfectly, that is item T-11, which is first reading of policy 5300. It is a relatively minor change that, you know, different levels of the organization have parsed through and made a recommendation on. But I will leave that to the board's discretion.
Very much, Dr. Evans. Which moves us right on to capital project update.
Yes, so we had an owner's meeting yesterday. I've uploaded to the board an updated schedule that kind of has, you know, right now, in the 100, 200 wing of the high school, most of the items are punch-listed. You know, in other words, we kind of know, we see the end is near, and we're trying to make sure all these relatively minor things get corrected. The panels, unfortunately, there's been another delay on this side of the building. We're expecting those panels to arrive on or around March 1st, at which point they will be installed. However, they can't be finished because of the caulking. It needs to be 40 degrees or warmer. You know, this weather was nice, but it wasn't, you know, definitive enough for them to organize a labor force to do the caulking. But those are coming in March. We also, I've shared with the board two designs for the breakout space furniture in the 200 wing. So, these are those kind of empty spaces right now between the half-walls. The initial design, that's the one that's in color. You can disregard that. After discussing it with the architect, we felt that that really was not appropriate, effective, or an efficient use of district resources. So, we tasked CPL to give us a redesign that would allow for, you know, kind of workspaces where students could sit down, could put their books or tablets or laptops on and be able to work or be able to eat. And so, you see that in the one-page design where there's basically going, we're going to install booths and countertops with seats next to the countertops against those half-walls. Okay, so that's the design that we received this afternoon. I forwarded that to the high school administration for feedback. But to Ms. Vaila, Mr. Lewis and I, we believe that that's a much more effective use of the space than the initial design. So, that is a, an update there.
Thank you very much, Steph. Go ahead, Victoria.
Did they find out what the owner was?
The tests are coming back tomorrow.
Any other questions regarding the capital project update? Awesome. Thank you very much. Upcoming events, you can find on the agenda. Any to add by anybody? Lenka?
I just wanted to quickly mention, we'll thank our school principals and building staff, administration, and students for helping support Monticello Rotary's annual Heartathon. So, congratulations and thank you for supporting such an amazing opportunity to support our local hospital. And I believe we have Mr. Palmer that will be attending tomorrow's Heartathon, and will be on the radio. So, thank you again to our Interact Club members for facilitating that as well. And Mr. Maranzano?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rivera. Following up with that, we have community events. We have some articles from the paper and stuff. The Heartathon is tomorrow, I believe, at Resorts World. So, that'll be going on. Any additions to community events? Questions and comments from the public? I don't know where the signup sheet is.
Behind Vicki.
No one on it? Thank you very much. Dr. Evans, superintendent update?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So, first, I want to welcome a few new members to our family. Maya DeWitt is here tonight. She is a new middle-school math teacher joining our team. Welcome, Maya. And Teresa Carlin is the interim assistant superintendent for curriculum inspection. Welcome, Teresa Carlin. You heard earlier reference to, you know, the exploits of our winter athletes. A number of our skiers are going on to state competitions. I know the boys' team, boys' basketball team is going to sectionals. I don't know if the girls' win tonight might have put them into sectionals, or they may have to win one more. They have one more to win. But we do have a Section 9 champion skier, and that is Alexis Hines. She's a Section 9 champion of slalom and giant slalom. So, congratulations, Alexis. Some other, yeah. Some updates on, you know, some outreach activities that we're doing to gather feedback on ways to improve our schools. We've begun surveying our students in grades 4 through 12 this week about school culture and climate. We also have a consultant group interviewing our administrators for feedback. We just launched the parent ser, Courtney Bonfante. We launched the parent surveys today that's up on the website for parents. We'll be sending out Parents Square announcements for those as well. This week, yesterday, I met with a high school student roundtable, and tomorrow, I'm meeting with a middle-school student roundtable on instruction and student learning. The feedback from yesterday's high school students was extremely positive, and I'll be providing those to the board at the next meeting. And the next iteration of Another Cup of Coffee is a little bit different. They'll be in the afternoon, so I'm calling those afternoon teas, because I am really trying hard not to drink coffee in the after, afternoons, but there will be coffee served. So, it's relatively the same format, except it's going to be at the end of the school day. So, for the first hour, I'll be at the school for the last hour of the day to meet with any interested staff or community members or students, and then I'll stay for an hour after the dismissal. Those have just been announced, and they're on the website, and they begin in April. District safety, you heard from Mr. Crumley about some ongoing district safety work that we've been doing. We are planning for a larger district-wide safety training for our staff at a May conference day. And administrator searches, just a general update here. We are, within the next two weeks, we're going to have final interviews for the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction position, the high school assistant principal vacancy, and the cook-manager position. So, I'm optimistic that we will have appointments ready for the Board of Education at the March 12th meeting. And we have just also posted the principal vacancies for Rutherford Elementary School, which will happen with Mr. Palmer's retirement, and for Robert J. Kaiser Middle School, which will happen with Ms. Knowlton's retirement. Both of those start dates are July 1st, but they have just gone out for posting. And I, too, will be on the air tomorrow morning at 7:30 for the Heartathon, partnering with, thank you, with Amanda Langseeder of Sullivan 180 to talk about some of the wonderful things that they're doing in partnership to support wellness in our district. That's the report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving right along, Lisa, assistant superintendent for business, update?
So, this evening, you have the budget status, revenue status, claims auditor, school lunch, profit and loss for the month of December. You have the student activity quarterly report. There's also a transportation bid award. We had the board approve an emergency contract for 31 days, and I had to bid. This is the result of that bid opening for the remainder of this school year. And finally, I'm asking the board to approve a contract with ECC Technologies to come in and do a assessment for us to help us finalize a smart bond project.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you very much, Mrs. Vaila. No update today from our interim assistant superintendent for curriculum. We're taking it easy on you for tonight. So, I have a quick question for Dr. Evans. If we wanted to do first reading and adoption of T-11, policy 5300, we need to amend?
A board member would need to make a motion to amend, to read, first reading and adoption. It would need to be seconded, discussion, and you would need to vote yes to amend, and then you could include it in a consent agenda after that, or taken as a group, not consent agenda.
We need to break T-11 out if we want to adopt it?
You could do it that way, too. So, you could...
Oh, no, we could adopt it and then just approve it.
Correct. So, you could amend it and then take it as a group, you know, all the teas?
You go for it. You take it.
Can I make a motion to amend T-11 to be the first reading of policy 5300? First reading and adoption of policy 5300?
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Made by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mrs. Jersey?
Motion to accept action items T-1 to T-13 as a group.
Second on that, made by Mrs. Gallagher. Any discussion? Vicki, you have a question?
Yeah, I have questions from my Heartathon policy number 4327 and policy 5225.
One moment. This is just to take them as the group. That's the next one. So, we have a second on taking them as a group. Any discussion? We did that part. All in favor? So ordered. Mrs. Jersey?
I make a motion to approve action items T-1 to T-13 as a group.
I have a second on that, made by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? Mrs. LaRosa?
Again, I have a question with... I'm number 4327. When children are, when students are expelled for one short time, did they say anything in there what happens if students are not attending online classes? And after being, what happens if they fall behind? For medical reasons, they say if they fall behind, what happens? But didn't they say anything about when the children are expelled or not doing what they need to do?
Okay, so we don't spell, we suspend, right? Yeah, that's okay. So, if they do not attend the after-school tutorial program, then they are marked absent. And so, then, the attendance policy would take over at that point. So, if a student accrues X number of absences, then there's, you know, outreach made to the family, to the student to make sure that they do attend. There have been situations where if the student is falling, is suspended, attending the after-school program and falling behind academically, where they try to match that student up with their teacher or a content specialist for the class that they're failing. So, that does happen. That, you know, that's consistent with other, you know, students who might be failing in any other coursework. So, if they are, you know, if a student is attending school, not suspended, but does go to, let's say, social studies every day, and they're failing social studies, there should be contact made between that, the teacher, the guidance counselor, and the family, and the student to try to help them. And that, that's consistent with students who are on long-term suspension. The expect, expectation is still there. If it's not being made, then, you know, I would expect a staff member to reach out to the family or the family to contact the school, and they'll try to resolve it.
Why is it listed on the bottom? Or on top, it says that if you're out on medical, medical alert, medical house, it states that that plan isn't viewed, but it's going to stay on the bottom that the plan or review.
What?
The trial suspended, should the plan be reviewed if they're not at home?
A plan or their performance?
Why if they're not performing?
Yeah. So, relative to the homebound instruction, there are different regulations that are in effect from state ed around homebound instruction for medical reasons. So, what the New York State School Boards Association has done here is really put those into policy. Similar regulations do not exist for students who are expended, excuse me, suspended. What is in place for them is that they're increasing the number of hours to be taught next year, and you see that in the policy. So, right now, if a secondary student is suspended, we're required to provide them with 10 hours a week of instruction. Next year, that's going to 15 hours a week. And similarly, at the elementary school, it's going, I believe, from five hours a week to 10 hours a week. So, it really comes down to commissioners' regulations as well as potential court rulings or commissioners' decisions around the issue. So, the policy committee, this, this comes from New York State School Boards Association. We believe it to be a big improvement on our existing policy. So, that's why the policy committee is recommending it this way.
I understand, I feel, do you need to rule number, telling who are suspended that are not a member? Like up here, it says the board, the administration, the time, the construction is effective. They weren't through a contract correctly, and if not, they say this improved the structure.
Okay.
I just feel it's joking, not suspended. And then up here, are they falling in the crack?
So, there is, just as an aside, there is a pretty significant push right now in Albany, whether that be the Board of Regents or the New York State Legislature, to cap the number of days that a school can suspend a student. So, there is actually legislation in the, I believe it's in the Assembly right now that would say a school cannot suspend students out of school for any more than 20 days. And my under, what I'm being told is that the Board of Regents is prepared to act on something like that, even if the legislature doesn't. Now, I know that's not addressing your particular questions with this policy, but there, there are, you know, there is a movement right now in Albany to cap that for out-of-school suspensions.
And we are making improvements to our present policy by adopting this, so we are making advancements towards letting those students more support.
If you're medical, not when they're suspended, if they're not doing their work, I would say on their...
I don't want to...
I just know what you're saying.
I, I, yeah, I don't want to give my honest opinion.
This is the first reading, though. Right, not an option.
Just one second. Ashley has a clarifying question.
Oh, I just want to say, this is the first reading. It's not adoption yet.
No, this is just the first reading.
First reading.
So, realistically, you could put together a memo yourself and bring it to the board and say, these are the concerns I have with this policy, because we're still two meetings away from actually adopting. So, you had a question. Are we good on 4329? 27. Are we good on 4327? So, Vicki, you had a question regarding? So Vicki, you had a question regarding? T-7?
Personal expression.
Is this the expression?
Yep.
Okay. My question is this. Like, it said in there that how things that happen on campus with social media kind of is a blurry line. So I, my question is, if something happens on campus and the students are videotaping it and putting it on, like, Instagram or Facebook or something like that, and it's occurring at school, but they don't put it on social media throughout your school? Is, however, we gamble with that policy? Do you think it's covered? It's in the line of blur?
They are blurry, and it is a bit of a moving target. But if, if there was an incident that was filmed in school of other students in whatever behavior it may be, then we do follow up with the students and may take disciplinary action, because that's a violation of our Code of Conduct. Videotape another student in school and to post it.
Well, you can, if possible, access or still violate the Code of Conduct?
Potentially, yes. I mean, you know, if it's kids playing basketball or something, you know, it kind of depends on what they're, how they're depicting students. It could be considered an act of harassment or, you know, bullying in some way. You know, that I'm posting this, you know, the kid who tripped down the stairs, I'm going to post that and make fun of him. You know, that might be considered harassment in some way. So it depends on what they're showing.
Would it be even funny to put those out there on social media?
In the past, we have, we've certainly spoken with students, and at times, when warranted, we've used the Code of Conduct to affect discipline. It depends, it really, it depends on the, it's so context-specific. And when it comes to these types of First Amendment issues, it can get pretty tricky. But, you know, we, we have dialogue within the administration and legal counsel when necessary to see what our options are.
Ken?
I was just reading the section she was talking about. I think there's a word missing on the top of page three. Let's see. First Amendment does not protect students from engaging in off-campus personal expression, which is forecasted to cause or actually cause a substantial disruption or material interference with school activity or interrupts another individual's access to school. Such threatening or bullying, I think it's supposed to be such as threatening or bullying harassment of others?
I don't think so.
It could be the... It probably should include "as" in there, but I, I think even without "as", it would be interpreted that way.
Sure, right.
So if the board would like to amend it to include "as", we could do that pretty easily, I think, if the majority of the board wanted it.
We like to want to add "as" to 50...
225.
225.
I would like to add "as".
I need a motion.
I would like, I would make, I would like to make a motion to add the word "as".
Second by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? Fantastic. Any other questions regarding anything on the action items? Fantastic. So that puts us at all in favor. We already had a motion to do them as a group. We already have a first and a second to approve them as a group. We had our discussion. All in favor? So ordered. Thank you, everybody. Correspondence, can be seen in the agenda. We have a few things in there which are interesting reads, so please take the time to look those over. Questions and comments from the public? Lincoln, did anybody sign up? Thank you very much. And you guys picked the right meeting. Motion for adjournment made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Vicki, thank you very much for making the time.
Any trustee can sign your papers.
Anybody on the board can sign them.
Do you want me to send you guys or you signed up?
You know what? They can work.